Prior to tonight's meeting, we'll have a student-led reflection. Madison Thomas will lead us in a reflection before the pledge. Madison is a senior at Hornville High School and a newly elected student council president. She is a member of the Beta Club, the Interact Club, and the DAO Leadership Program. Following Madison's reflection, District 8 School Board Member Al Sufferin will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Can everyone please stand?
Okay, I'm sorry. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us all and covering us in attendance of tonight's meeting. I pray and ask that you give us guidance and wisdom as we continuously prepare and strive for the academic successes of many within our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
To the Father, and the United States of America, and to a republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madison, and go Tigers. I call tonight's meeting of the board to order. For the record, I'd like it to show that all board members in attendance, along with our Superintendent Dr. Kent Ortling. First item on agenda is 2.01, it's a resolution in memory of deceased students. And Mr. Cody, could you please read that for us?
Yes. Whereas Nasser Brown White was a pre-K4 student at Carver Early Learning Center, Camden Bauer was a second-grade student at St. Rose Elementary, and Kevin Josue Gordado was a ninth-grade student at Destrehan High School during the 2022-2023 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Nasser White, Camden Bauer, and Kevin Gordado its sincerest sympathy in this, their time of sorrow. And be it further resolved that a page in the July 26, 2023 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the families. I hereby move that this gets adopted.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any board discussion? If none, please cast your vote. The resolution in memory of the deceased student passed unanimously. Next item is 3.01, Board Meeting Minutes. The Board Meeting Minutes of June 12 Committee Meetings and June 14 Board Meeting are presented to the board. Second. Seven motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next up is 3.02, the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance. The school board has purchased student accidents insurance for all students and athletic participants for the past 12 years. Cost of the program is driven by claims experience. Director of Risk Management and Benefits Daranisha Gales has received renewal rates from Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services. The renewal of the plan has a .47 decrease. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance with National Union Fire Insurance Company from Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services at a cost of $102,896.
A second.
Seven. Motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? I think we have to note that we had a decrease in insurance premiums. If none, please cast your vote. That item passed with no opposition. Next up is 3.03, the purchase of faithful performance bonds. The purchase of faithful performance bonds is a good business practice and protects the school board's assets. The school board purchases various bonds covering the school board and all employees. These are issued at three separate bonds, which expire July 31, 2023. Director of Risk Management and Benefits Daranisha Gales has received quotes from CNA Western Surety for the faithful performance bonds for the superintendent and the tax collector, and from Travelers for the employee dishonesty bond from L.A. Insurance Services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase of faithful performance bonds for the superintendent and the tax collector from CNA Western Safety, as well as the employee dishonesty bond from Travelers at a cost of $12,251.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mrs. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 3.04, the 2023-24 Student Code of Conduct Student Handbook. As mandated by Louisiana Revised Statute 17:416.8, an annual review of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Student Code of Conduct District Handbook was conducted by the Discipline Committee on May 31, 2023. Recommendations for revisions to the handbook were made by the committee in compliance with board policy. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO A of the Board Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move to adopt revisions to the St. Charles Parish Public Schools 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Mr. President, just something I'd like Ms. Jerry Smith, the Executive Director of Child Welfare and Attendance and Student Services, to please come forward and say a few words about the handbook this year.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Ortling, and thank you. As stated, the Discipline Committee did meet on May 31, and the first revision relates to attendance as required by Act 318 of the 2023 Louisiana Legislative Session. Students will be allowed to miss up to three days related to mental or behavioral health concerns with valid documentation, and that language has been updated in our handbook. The second significant change falls in the Discipline section of the handbook. In an effort to maintain a safe and supportive learning environment for all of our students, this year the district will be implementing a violence prevention intervention pilot at the high schools only. For the first fight, students will be required to serve a 45-day suspension. While serving that 45-day suspension, students will receive academic instruction, be required to maintain positive attendance, participate in restorative interventions, and social-emotional learning lessons, and a transportation agreement will be required. The second fight will result in an expulsion recommendation. What we'd like parents to know is that the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook will be reviewed with teachers and students during the first week of school. Students will come home with the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook in their inbox during that first week, most likely the first day, and families are strongly encouraged to review the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook with their students at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, if I could, first of all, Ms. Smith, thank you. It's your job, as I learned, at the Discipline Review Committee meeting is not easy. I appreciate your work. Secondly, as Ms. Smith mentioned, it will be in there, but it's also on the website under the inbox on our district website. You can download a soft copy, PDF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 3.05, substitute bus monitor staffing proposal. Bus monitors play a crucial role in facilitating safe transport of students to and from school and school-based activities. These positions are required on special education, Head Start, and U.J. Landry Senior Educational Program Center buses. The Transportation Department has identified a need to increase the pay for substitute bus monitors to align with classroom day-to-day substitutes and for the utilization of ESS to meet substitute bus monitor staffing demands due to daily absences, leaves, and separations of service. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO B of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the bus monitor staffing proposal through ESS.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mrs. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And there's no opposition to that item there. Next item is 3.06, bid authorization request for Destrehan High School and Hornville High School Baseball and Softball Turf Project. The Destrehan High and Hornville High School Baseball and Softball Turf Project is an approved project under Phase II Long Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities. The plans for the project have been completed by the engineer and are ready for bid. This agenda item reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this item.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion?
Mr. President, if I could mention that this is essentially the first step of that list of the athletics, PE and athletics plan that we approved in June. This is the first step in that direction, so we're taking action quickly. Thank you, and thanks for your work from Johnny and Kate and his whole department. Appreciate you.
And I'd like to add that although this is four different fields, it's all the same project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gregson and Ms. Alexander for pointing that out. Any other discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And 3.06 approved. 3.07 is a change order number one, Hornville High School Gym Roof Replacement. The contract modifications included in change order number one are as follows. Labor to install 60 sheets of owner-provided half-inch gyp sheathing board at stucco areas where sheathing was deteriorated behind existing stucco finish, $8,280. A credit for unused labor portions of the lightweight insulating concrete deck removal, metal deck replacement, and backfill insulation. Unused material will be turned over to the owner for a credit of $14,200, for a total credit of $5,942. Approve this change order, allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was viewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this change order number one for the Hornville High School Roof Replacement Project at a $5,942 credit to the district.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.07 is approved. Next is 3.08, which is substantial completion of Hornville High School Gym Roof Replacement Project. Hornville High School Gym Roof Replacement Project is ready to be accepted as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Monday, July 17, 2023, with punch list items remaining. The architect recommends acceptance. Acceptance of substantial completion of the Hornville High School Gym Roof Replacement Project will allow the contractor to process all close-out documents. This agenda item reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept substantial completion for the Hornville High School Gym Roof Replacement Project.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.08 is approved. 3.09 is bid acceptance Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC Replacement Project. The Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC Replacement Project is an approved project of the 2023-24 Long Range Major Maintenance Capital Improvements Plan. ESER III funds will be utilized to fund the majority of the project. The engineer's construction budget for the Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC Replacement is $2,300,000. Bids were received from two contracts on Tuesday, July 18, 2023. The lowest bid received from Volute Incorporated has been deemed non-responsive due to a significant mathematical error in compiling the bid. The base bid received from Gallo Mechanical LLC was in the amount of $2,789,000. According to the engineer, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the base bid from Gallo Mechanical will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the base bid submitted by Gallo Mechanical LLC for the Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC Replacement Project in the amount of $2,789,000.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.09 is approved. 3.10 is a job description revision for social-emotional learning coach. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the board. After careful analysis of the duties and responsibilities of the social-emotional learning coach, revisions were needed to support school system operations. This agenda item reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve job description revisions for social-emotional learning coach.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.10 passes. Next is 3.11, which is personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO C of the Board Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the board.
Second. Seven. Motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And there's no opposition to 3.11. Moving right along, 3.12 is an industrial tax exemption application for St. Charles Clean Fuse LLC. Effective July 1, 2018, Governor Edwards directed that changes be made to the industrial tax exemption program known as ITEP, which alters the conditions under which a manufacturing company may be granted an ad valorem tax exemption and allows local governing bodies to be involved in the approval process. Each governing body may approve the exemption of 80% of its share of the ad valorem taxes over a 10-year period. St. Charles Clean Fuse LLC has filed an ITEP application with the state of Louisiana for a planned $3.5 billion ammonia production plant in St. Rose. Once the state approves the ITEP application, the school board could then approve or deny the application. However, by approving the ITEP application at this time, the school board could allow its approval to take effect by taking no action when it received the application. This agenda item reviewed at the Finance and Order Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the upcoming industrial tax exemption application of St. Charles Clean Fuels LLC.
A second.
Seven. Motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mrs. Boudreau. Any discussion? Mr. Smith, can you put your mic? Thank you.
I'm sorry. There's just one question that I have that I may need some clarification on. The board, when the board receives the official request for exemption, the board can, in fact, take no action and thus the application is approved. Is the application then submitted to the board and must be placed on the board's agenda as an agenda item, and the board takes no action? Or does the board authorize the superintendent to issue that approval prior to that? I'm just a little bit unclear on that process and how that process works.
I will ask our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Ronald White, who checked on this prior to this meeting. I believe it says, as you stated, as long as we do not take any further action, we're basically given approval now for it. If it came back approved, then there would be no further action. I'll let Mr. White, who followed up on this.
Thank you, and good evening. Yes, once it comes back officially to the board, if the board takes no action, then it is automatically approved. So it would be up to the board to either take action to approve it at that time or take action to deny it at that time. If the board takes no action, then it is, you may say, by default considered approved. So by the board taking this action this evening, it would relieve the board of having to address it again. Certainly, the board could address it again when it comes back to the board, if the board so chooses.
I guess maybe, and that's where I'm a little bit confused, and this action that the board is taking tonight is no action, correct?
It's in part to express your support, the board's support of the application, so that the application can be presented with the board's support, pre-support in a favorable manner.
Correct. There's a difference between support and taking action on whether or not the board approves the exemption. I guess maybe that's, I'm just trying to be sure that we understand and that we are in compliance with the requirements and the performance of our responsibility. I will recommend to the board that if the board, the item, to have the item come back officially to the board, and then the board votes to either accept the request for exemption or not accept it, that, to me, makes a much cleaner process and indicates specifically what the board's preferences in this matter.
So we do have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau on this item. It does no further discussion. Please cast your vote. And there's no opposition to 3.12. 3.13 is District 3, Phase 3 District Staffing Plan. Due to continued staffing challenges, the administration has developed a phased-in plan to transition contracted temporary positions to district positions. Phase 1 included transitioning 61 positions, including all paria educators, which is 55 positions, and all clerical, six positions, to district positions. Phase 2 included transitioning positions through attrition. Phase 3 includes transitioning custodial positions to district positions for the 2023-2024 school year, for a total of 15 positions. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Phase 3 District Staffing Plan for the 15 custodial positions. for the 15 custodial positions at a cost of $303,000.
A second.
Seven, motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.13 is approved. 3.14 is pay increase for AMPM positions effective for the 2023-24. In order to retain and attract the most highly qualified AMPM positions and remain competitive, the district has identified a need to increase compensation. The district's proposed pay rate increases effective for fiscal year 2023-2024. This agenda item is reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GOD of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the pay rate increase for AMPM positions effective fiscal year 2023-2024 as presented.
I'll second. An appropriate, the approximate cost is going to be $49,000, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seven, motion by Mrs. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next item is 3.15, milage rates for the tax year 2023. Louisiana Revised Statute 47:1705A requires an agency with taxing authority to furnish the assessor and legislative auditor with a tax rate to be applied to the assessed property values each year. The St. Charles Parish School Board, as a taxing body, must take official action to approve the levy of property tax rates. Favorable Board action, if the tax resolution is necessary for the millages to be levied and taxes collected. This agenda item reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GOD of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we reduce the school operations and maintenance milage by 2.5 mils from 41.06 mils to 38.56 mils and adopt the resolution to approve the milage rates for the tax year 2023.
Seven, motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to note that this is, assuming this is approved, this would be the third year in a row of reduction in the lowest levied in over 21 years.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on that, the, this would bring our total mils from 54.46 to 51.96. The one milage rate that we reduced and this is school operations and maintenance tax. The other three milage rates will remain the same. The school constitutional tax will remain 4.04. School construction improvement tax will remain 4.35, and the school bonds tax will remain 5.01.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin and Mr. Gregson. Any other discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. 3.16 is interim fiscal year 24 budget. State law requires the approval of a budget for the district's general fund and special revenue fund. A public hearing was held on Wednesday, July 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM in compliance with statutory provisions. The proposed budget for fiscal year 24 represents a budget that allocates approximately 70.8% of general fund expenditures in the area of instruction. This agenda item reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 12, 2023, and is aligned with GOD of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the interim fiscal year 24 budget.
Second.
Seven, motion by Ms. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion?
Mr. President, if we could have Mr. Ronald White come to the microphone again, our Chief Financial Officer, to present a review of the interim budget.
Thank you very much. I have a short presentation that summarizes the budget that's being presented to the Board this evening. For the general fund revenues, we have budgeted an increase of ad valorem taxes, increase in ad valorem taxes of $10.2 million to a total of $92.2 million. In spite of the milage reduction that the Board has just approved, the overall property tax base has increased and that is what's causing the increase in property tax revenue for this year. Sales tax revenue, in order to be conservative, it's been budgeted to decrease by $1.4 million to a total of $70.6 million. Some of this is due to the fact that we are getting further away from the Hurricane Ida recovery process throughout the parish, and so we're expecting that the sales tax may very well decrease a little bit over the coming year. For estate funding, the budget shows $34.9 million, which is an increase of $3.6 million, and that's due to the state funding of stipends that was just passed in this last legislative session. And for other revenues, in order to be conservative, the budget shows a decrease of $100,000 and a total of $4.7 million. So the total revenues are $202.4 million, which is an increase of $12.3 million. For the general fund expenditures, salaries and benefits will increase by $12.5 million in salaries due to the district-funded pay increases approved by the Board, as well as those state-funded stipends. Additionally, under the benefit category, we're showing an increase of $2.0 million for healthcare benefits that, in order to be conservative and show an increase in those costs. Property insurance has been moved out of the construction fund for accounting purposes and into the general fund, so that's showing a $7.0 million increase for this coming year in general fund expenditures. And we're showing other expenditures, a total increase of $2.1 million. So overall, we're showing the total expenditures and transfers out of the general fund to other funds of $206.0 million, which is an increase of $18.1 million for this year. Due to the additional construction that we're doing, particularly with the athletic and PE facilities, we're showing that we will be using some of our fund balance for those projects. As a result, we'll be showing a one-time deficit for this particular year of $3.5 million. For the special revenue funds, in order to be conservative, we're showing no revenues for the Hurricane Ida Recovery Fund. We would prefer to just show those once we do receive them and not try to estimate or project those before they happen. However, we are budgeting expenditures of $2.6 million for the ongoing recovery and are hoping to have that completed during this fiscal year. For the other special revenue funds, we're showing revenues and expenditures of $18.0 million. And in both cases, we're showing $5 million of ESAR funding, revenues, and expenditures. For other funds, we're showing debt service funds, $12.0 million of revenues. That represents the ad valorem taxes that are dedicated to the debt service and $11.5 million of expenditures for bond interest and principal payments. For capital projects funds, we're showing $9.4 million of budgeted revenues that represents the property tax milage that's dedicated to construction. And we're showing $25.1 million of expenditures, which includes the ongoing 2022 bond projects, bond issue projects. The reason the expenditures are so much more than revenues is that we will be using the bond proceeds from this past year for those projects. And for the lunch fund, we're showing $7.1 million of revenues, which is conservatively budgeted, which we tend to do early in the year and wait for the actual revenues before we would budget higher. And we're showing an $8 million of expenditures. And I'd be glad to take any questions at this time.
Question?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ronald White, who's our Chief Financial Officer. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, as you noted in the background, there was a public hearing held prior to tonight's board meeting for the interim budget, and there was no public comment. I'd just like to mention, for the public's benefit, copies of the interim budget are available in the public libraries and also on our website.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. Any other discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And the Board approves FY24's budget. Next is 3.17, which is accounts payable for the month of June. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item is viewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 24, 2023, and is aligned with GOD of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of June 2023 in the total amount of $5,573,372.
Seven, motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.17, accounts payables approved. Next on the agenda is 4.01, which is standing committee reports. If there's any chair of any committee that'd like to give a report of their committee meetings that occurred this past Monday, please do so at this time.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Ray Gregson, and Mr. John Smith, met Monday, July 24. We discussed three items, two of which were on the agenda this evening. We also discussed an update on the open positions within the district and perhaps more importantly, the significant number of former staff who have left the district and then came back to work for the district. And I believe this is a true testament to not just the financial commitment that we've made to our employees, but for the work environment that has been fostered as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee, consisting of myself, Ms. Boudreau, and Mr. Alexander, met on Monday, July 24, and we covered seven items. Five of the seven items were on the agenda before the full Board this evening, during this meeting, and they, the five items were approved. Those items were the Phase 3 District Staffing Plan, the pay rate increase for AMPM positions effective for fiscal year 2023-2024, milage rates for the tax year 2023, interim fiscal year 2024 budget, and the accounts payable for the month of June 2023. The other two items that were covered during the committee meeting were the committee received a temporary staffing agency update and transition plan from Assistant Superintendent Teresa Weber and Chief Financial Officer Ronald White. And also, the committee was presented data regarding students who reside in St. Charles Parish but do not attend St. Charles Parish Public Schools. And that report was from the Director of Information Technology, Stephanie Steib, and the superintendent. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Mr. President, the Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday, July 24. There were four items on our agenda. The first item was the bid authorization request for Destrahan High School and Hornville High School baseball and softball field turf project. The second item was change order number one for Hornville High School gym roof replacement. And the third item was substantial completion of the Hornville High School gym roof replacement project. And the last and final item was bid acceptance for Harry Hurst Middle School HVAC replacement project. All of these items progressed to tonight's board meeting and were approved. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
The Transportation Committee did meet this week to discuss the approval of the substitute bus monitor staffing proposal through ESS. It was approved, and on the committee with me is Mr. Ellis Alexander and Ms. Becky Weber, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreau.
Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee met on Monday, July 24. There was only one agenda item, and it was approved. It was the District Student Code of Conduct Handbook.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday. That committee is myself, Ms. Karen Boudreau, and Mr. Al Sufferin. We had our monthly legal update, in which the whole, we went to executive session, the whole Board was present. And then we discussed the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance and the purchase of faithful performance bond. Both those items were brought to the board table tonight and approved, and that concludes my report. If no other reports, we'll move right along. The next item is the Superintendent's report. Dr. Ken Ortling.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2023-24 school year is quickly approaching. We're excited as ever to welcome our students and families back from what I hope was a restful summer break. To ensure smooth transition to the start of the new school year, we'll once again conduct staggered starts for kindergarten through 12th grade students. Kindergarten through 12th grade students with a last name beginning with A through K will attend their first day of school on Tuesday, August 8, and will remain home on Wednesday, August 9. Kindergarten through 12th grade students with a last name beginning with L through Z will attend school on August 9 and remain home on August 8. All kindergarten students, all kindergarten through 12th grade students will attend school daily beginning on Thursday, August 10. Pre-kindergarten students will begin their staggered start on August 16 and August 17. Information relative to returning to school will also be sent home by school administration. A back-to-school brochure is being mailed to all St. Charles Parish residents prior to school reopening. Please check your mailbox in the coming weeks for the brochure. Students will once again receive an inbox. The inbox contains important district and school documents for the year. I'd like to thank Shell Norco Manufacturing Complex for its continued support of funding for the inbox. Please be sure to review the information in the inbox and complete any back-to-school paperwork before the deadline. Please visit the district's website and school websites for important back-to-school information. Information is being updated regularly with important information for the start of the new school year. The annual youth rally backpack giveaway for St. Charles Parish students and parents will take place on Saturday, July 29, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon at Jerusalem Shriner Center located at 1940 Ormond Boulevard. The rally is sponsored by the St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, St. Charles Parish Department of Community Services, A Safe Place of St. Charles, Blessed to be a blessing, United Way of St. Charles, and St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This year's event will be a drive-through school supply giveaway to the first 600 St. Charles Parish residents. This is a great kickoff to the school year. Hope to see you there. Bus registration is now open for the 23-24 school year. If your child will use transportation service this school year, please log on to the transportation bus registration page and register each child separately. If your child is 10 years old or younger, there will be a few additional questions to complete to ensure safe delivery home in the afternoons. We are pleased to offer the use of the Where's the Bus app to assist families with real-time bus arrival to and from school. Once you register your child for the bus, please register for the bus app. If you are already a user of the app, there is no need to complete this step again. If you have questions about transportation service or bus registration, please call 900- We look forward to providing transportation service to our students and seeing them at the bus stop on August 8 and 9. We are pleased informing you that St. Charles Parish Public Schools will continue to provide all students with one free healthy breakfast and one free healthy lunch at school each day for the 2023-2024 school year. Should you have any questions or concerns, don't hesitate to contact Child Nutrition at 985-785-3181. Finally, as we prepare for the start of another fantastic school year, please know the health and safety of our students and employees is and continues to be a top priority. Our Safe Schools program is robust and developed with the support and partnership of the St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, St. Charles Parish Emergency Operations Center, St. Charles Parish Hospital, and local first responders. It is continuously evaluated and improved. It was most recently reviewed by nationally renowned Safe Schools expert Michael Dorn from Safe Havens International as part of an ongoing process to ensure protocols and practices in place are of the highest standard. This summer, our Board approved enhancements to our Safe Schools program at a cost of $2.3 million. These enhancements will be implemented in a phased approach and include additional elementary resource officers, protective coating on glass, and camera system upgrades. This is all in addition to single-point entries, safety vestibules, perimeter fencing, camera systems linked to local law enforcement, and currently staffed resource officers. Employees will also take part in yearly trainings to be able to respond appropriately in emergency situations if they should arise. The mental health and wellness of our students also continues to be prioritized as we work to assess students' needs and provide early clinical interventions and supports to them. In the past few years, our Board has made significant investments in programs, expansion, and resources to support social-emotional wellness of our students. School-based social-emotional wellness teams are implemented in recent years. Licensed mental health professionals, as well as school counselors, play a critical role on these teams by providing wraparound support to our students. We've enhanced our behavioral health universal screening process to encompass our students' social-emotional learning competencies. Our enhanced behavioral health universal screening process identifies students experiencing trauma, anxiety, and other adverse circumstances, allowing us to determine if additional student supports are needed, and then align internal and external resources as appropriate to address their needs. We also have a unveiling of a brand-new safety video we'd like to share with the Board. We were asked by the Board earlier during our last Board retreat in June for administration to, to put together a video to show our public of the many safety measures that we have in place, and we have that night to show the, tonight to show the Board. Without further ado, Ms. McMillan and Mr. Daughlin.
St. Charles Parish Public Schools credo states that our core business is teaching and learning. Our focus is continuous improvement, and our commitment is to learning for life. We recognize quality teaching and learning can only take place if students and employees feel safe while at school. If you have visited one of our schools in the past, you may have seen many safety protocols in place. We continue to focus on how to improve the safety and security of our learning environments, as evidenced by our partnership with Safe Havens International. The school system contracted with Safe Havens during the 2022-2023 school year to conduct a school safety and security audit, including an onsite assessment of all district sites, an onsite strategic-level interview, and an off-site review of the district's emergency management plans and safety and security policy. Upon the review of the audit's findings, accommodations, and recommendations for consideration, the St. Charles Parish School Board approved a $2.3 million safety and security enhancement plan. This plan will address the audit's recommendations through a phased-in approach during the next three years. Projects included in the first phase will be implemented during the 2023-2024 fiscal year and include additional elementary school resource officers, a safety, security, and emergency preparedness coordinated position, protective film covering for glass in strategic locations, enhanced electronic access to facilities, generator transfer switch gear at strategic locations, expansion of current surveillance system to include analytic software, Stop the Bleed kit, installation of additional panic buttons, enhancement of allied health services, student training modules focused on preventing suicide, self-harm, and bullying, enhance remote HVAC shut-off access, space management training, and campus modifications to allow for natural surveillance of surroundings by employees. The projects outlined in the Safety and Security Enhancement Plans, three phases, provide clearly defined action steps to further protect our students.
I stand here at Hornville High School where I was a student over 40 years ago. Over the past 40 years, things in our country have changed dramatically and in our schools. As a Board member, we have taken fixed strides in providing safety and security for all of our stakeholders. I feel good that our schools have the very best cameras, lighting, and security enhancers that make the schools a much safer environment. We have facilities that are second to none.
Establishing comprehensive safety policies and procedures is essential. The school system has developed and continues to refine protocols for safety measures in emergency situations, in addition to conducting regular safety drills and evaluating efficiency of communication channels. By having clear guidelines and protocols in place, staff is empowered to respond quickly to potential emergencies to protect the well-being of all students.
Stakeholder feedback is very important for us as a school system when we consider our focus on continuous improvement, especially when it comes to safety measures, whether it's through yearly district surveys, whether it's through small focus groups conducted through our audits, and/or the many stakeholder advisory meetings that I conduct personally. We reflect on our processes overall as a school system and identify areas that we can improve. It's very important for us to receive the feedback from those that we serve, which are our students, our employees, our parents, our community, and business and industry partners. And from that feedback, we're able to really revise and enhance our procedures. So our continuous improvement, our focus on continuous improvement is important so that we are constantly looking at ways to improve the services that we provide our students, as well as the safety measures that we have in place across the school system to provide that safe, nurturing, and conducive environment for learning. I, like our families, have two kids myself in our school system, and I treat each and every one of our kids in the school system, all 9800 of them, as if they were my own. So we want to make sure we're providing a safe environment for our students and for our employees. And part of that feeling of safety comes through communication, open, honest, and transparent communication. We value that type of communication as a school system and want to make sure that our parents feel that same trust.
We embrace our responsibility to safeguard the well-being of our students and staff here in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Each school has a Safe Schools team, and the school system has a Safe Schools Task Force comprised of members from various community partners and first responders. In addition, St. Charles Parish Public Schools is fortunate to have a very close working relationship and partnership with the St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, St. Charles Parish Emergency Operations Center, St. Charles Parish Hospital, and local first responders.
I've been committed to making sure that we have a strong partnership because I want to make sure that all of our children, our teachers, and our school properties are safe in this parish. And we have been committed, we have worked closely with several superintendents since I've been sheriff to make sure that that partnership is as strong as ever and that our children are protected. We work hard from a tactical level to, to know all of the floor plans of schools to where all of our deputies, not just those resource officers and dare officers, are able to be in the schools and make them safe, but all of our deputies train on an annual basis multiple times for school safety. We are as prepared as we can possibly be for any hostile event that could occur in schools, and I think the students and the teachers all know that and really appreciate it, and we certainly hope that they get a feeling of comfort by our presence on the school campuses here in St. Charles Parish. I would also like to add that I am a graduate not only of the entire school system, but Luling Elementary, J.B. Martin Jr. High School, Hornville High School, even for my friends who are Destrahan graduates. So I'm a product of this school system, and my, both of my children are, and now I've got three and soon five grandchildren who will also enter the school system and breed products of it. So we're very proud of that, and I am as committed as I can be to make sure that all of those children, not just my family members, but all of them are as safe as we can possibly make them.
Creating a safe school system requires collaboration among all stakeholders. Local law enforcement agencies, teachers, administrators, support staff, students, and families must work together to identify potential risks, address safety concerns, and implement preventative measures. Every child deserves a safe place to learn and grow. Thank you for partnering with us to provide a safe learning environment for the children of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. You and I, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools.
I want to just commend the Administrator of Safety, Security, Athletics, Cade Rogers, for working with our Public Information Director, Ms. Regina McMillan, and Mr. Mason Daughlin, who always does such a great job producing these videos. Thank you all for your commitment to our, to the safety of our, our school system.
Mr. President, just one thing. We, we've talked a lot about telling our story, and Regina Mason, that's exactly what we were talking about. I couldn't be more proud to be a part of a district that not just kind of does it, but then makes sure that we tell it in the right way, and I'm going to work very hard to make sure that we can increase the budget next year to get a better spokesperson.
Mr. President, before I conclude my report, I just want to wish everyone a, a, you know, an awesome, exciting school year, the 2023-2024 school year. Our teachers will be welcomed next week at our beginning of the year welcome event at the LaFond Performing Arts Center. Certainly, we look forward to welcoming them as our administrators return this week. So it's an exciting time to be in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Welcome back, students, parents, employees. We can't wait to get the school year kicked off. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
I move to adjourn.
So have a motion by Ms. Boudreaux, a second by Ms. Weber to adjourn. Does anybody oppose adjourn, adjourn? If not, we stand adjourned.